twenty twenty five, City Council Special Meeting. And it is five thirty and we are going to go into Executive Session. City Council for the City of McLennan-Chislin, Texas reserves the right to convene into Executive Session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed as authorized by Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one. So we will be in Executive Session and see you then. Good evening, it is six thirty. We had already called the meeting to order at five thirty, but we are now out of Executive Session. So no action was taken in Executive Session. And if you could, Mr. Powers, can you lead us in our invocation?
Father Kevin, we thank you so much for this opportunity to be able to gather here in the peace and safety of this place to do the city's business. We ask your blessing upon all those who work for the city and who volunteer for the city and for the interested parties that are here, including the citizens, developers, and so forth. Father, we just ask your blessing upon everybody here that we might comport ourselves in such a way that we bring honor to you and we would act in the best interest of the city and the citizens. We ask you pleased to be with those who are maybe suffering this evening, maybe having difficulties in their lives. We ask your blessing upon them as well and just your blessing upon our city. In Christ's name and prayer.
Amen. Mr. London, will you lead us in our pledges?
To the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. God bless Texas.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next up is our Rules of the Quorum and I've started drawing names after Memorial Day to dedicate each meeting to, because I figure if you're dedicating to somebody who gave their life for the country, probably should just be kind to one another in that person's name. Tonight, we will honor PFC Neil Turner, who was killed in Operation Enduring Freedom. He was with the I forty-one Infantry. And so we will honor him tonight. With that, we will open up our public hearing five point one. Actually, I apologize. Oh, no, public hearing, public hearing five point one, public hearing to receive comments on special use permit for a detached guesthouse on property located at thirteen ninety-five East FM five fifty Rockwall, Texas. It is six thirty-two. Public hearing is open. And with nobody speaking, it is six thirty-three, we will close that one. Five point two, public hearing to receive comments on an ordinance amendment to the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance is approved in Chapter fourteen A, Zoning Ordinance, Article four, zoning districts. Section four dash eight, General Business District, to regulate noise, light, and sound in the General Business District amended by adding subsections four dash eight K. It is six thirty-three, public hearing is open. And with no comments, we will close it at the same time, six thirty-three. And now we will go to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments, Angela? No? Does any citizen wish to speak? Okay, we will close citizens' comments at six thirty-three. That brings us to consent agenda. Counsel, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda unless y'all see an item that needs to be pulled for discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we will be going to our new vote. All those in favor? Supposed to be up on the screen, so I apologize. We're trying it out tonight for the new system, but I will tell y'all, we have passed Consent Agenda seven though. So that will bring us to our presentation, eight point one. Presentation by P three Works LLC on the Establishment and Administration of Special Financing Districts, Including Public Improvement Districts.
Do you want to speak over here?
Perfect.
Yes. Mayor, Council, thank you so much. My name is Jordan Sawyer. I'm the Regional Director with P three Works. And this with me, Jason Hughes, with Hilltop Securities. He's the city's financial advisor. So we're going to be kind of talking both jointly through this presentation. So this is really... Is this one up? Do you mean? I think it's on, yeah. I can lean a little closer. This, this, I feel, feel, I'm a recovering lawyer, so this feels like I'm back in my law school days here.
It's more for the people that are online.
That makes sense, I like it. All right, perfect. Yeah, so, so this is really a kind of an overview of PIDS generally. Jason and I work on PIDS throughout the area. Quite a few districts that we've kind of been managing, but really, this is a broad overview. And then we're going to talk very specifically at the end about two specific projects. So if you want to go to the first slide, and I don't, is there a clicker over here? Okay, if you can go to the next slide. So PIDS generally, very broadly, are authorized under Chapter three seventy-two of the Local Government Code. Again, like I said, I'm a recovering attorney, so this is, this is what the stuff I like. But really, just a broad sense, they allow a city to take special power within a limited area. So if you go to the next slide there. Big picture piece here, PIDS are not MUDs, they are not developer-owned, they are not a political subdivision, they are basically an area on a map in which a city can take special actions. So City Councils, the board, really is the one running that. It allows the cities to extend infrastructure without specifically taxing existing residents. I think the way we kind of like to say it is it allows growth to pay for growth. So it's specifically saying for infrastructure that's going to help this one area, the people that are benefiting from it are going to be the ones who pay. Really, it's a tool that can be used to support and incentivize development, helps grow the city tax base without, again, subjecting your current residents to new taxes, and really can help give a hand to the city in promoting the kind of growth that you want. Can you go to the next slide? So yeah, reasons to utilize a PID, and Jason, feel free if you want, so different economic tool that we can see all over the place, really promoting the coordination with the city's developers, allowing the cities and developers to really work together. One of the big things here is the underlying piece there is the but-for test. That's something we use all the time and throughout the creation of a PID levying assessments is the idea that it really should be that you're getting something that you would not have gotten but for the PID. So the present, so the items we'll talk about a little bit later, these are PIDS that are already created, but as new developers come, this is kind of a, the broad stroke here is this but-for test. So you can get asking for superior design, looking for different unit sizes, private amenities that are specifically for this area. It allows you to accelerate your construction, you're continuing to say, developer, if you want to be able to bring high-quality things to the city that the city and the residents want, the cities are able to kind of team up with the developer for that. And then also working with the developer to fund other projects that can be helpful to the city more broadly. One way we see this a lot of times is, excuse me, cities are using PIDS in other financing processes to unlock parts of the city of saying, hey, we really want to be in this area, we want growth in this area, but without some specific homes there, we can't get there. PIDS are a really useful tool in that. Do you want the next slide, please?
I'll go, and I'll take over here for just a moment. So if you see there, as far as the PIDS, those are a defined area, it can be within your ETJ, but most of the time, what we see is you annex that land into the city, because you're giving the developer a very powerful tool whenever you create a PID for them. And so a lot of times, by bringing them in, yes, the developer's helped because he gets reimbursed some of those public infrastructure costs, but you're getting the tax value. So that's why normally you see that it's within the city limits. So as Jordan said, these are assessments, so they are not a tax. And typically, what we do is those assessments are levied towards the very beginning of the PID or shortly thereafter of the creation. And then, as much as possible, we like to keep those static. So in other words, we don't have an increase in annual assessments, it's like this. So basically, there's kind of budgetary certainty, if you will, for homeowners whenever they're moving in. So one of the other nice things is those assessments can be paid in full. So if you are a homeowner, if you move into a PID, you have this assessment lien, which is known on the front end. If you choose to, you may pay that on day one. And if you do that, you avoid any kind of interest into the future. What's most common, quite frankly, is that people will usually just simply finance that, then there is that interest component, just like you have with your home mortgage. Those are assessments, or beg your pardon, the assessments are a lien that runs with the land. So whoever is the owner of the land is the assessment payer. So typically, what you see is the developer during that construction period, whenever the infrastructure's being put in, is the sole owner of the land. Then there starts to be diversification typically to home builders and then certainly to the end users, which are people living in those homes or buying those homes. And again, those, the owners are the ones that have that assessment. So the assessments can be used to pay debt service on bonds if bonds are issued, and we'll talk about that in just one moment, or if we have a reimbursement agreement, which is simply the agreement with the developer to reimburse them for those public infrastructure costs. And then the other nice thing is the PID is meant to be self-contained. And what I mean by that is the PID and the assessments levied for that PID also pay your administrative expenses. So probably ninety-nine point five, maybe higher than that, of the cities in Texas that use PIDS have a third-party administrator. And again, that's Jordan Sawyer and his group. And he and those other administrative expenses tied to the PID are, again, paid from those assessments. So it's not coming from your general fund, water and sewer fund, or any other city-related fund. Next slide, please. I think there was one, was there one before that? Okay, you want to go back through the creation?
Sure. Yeah, so, so again, there are PIDS in the city that have already been created, but really, kind of a multi-step process to get from point A to point B. Often, those will start with a development agreement, really a negotiated process between a developer and the city, where the city can kind of lay out what it's wanting, what it's needing to, in order to have the growth that it wants, and a developer is able to come to the city and say, here are the things that allow us to be successful. The first way that normally works is a petition is submitted by the property owner saying, I would like to have a PID created on my property. A city can't walk in and create a PID without being asked to do so. That has to be signed by at least fifty percent of the landowners in the area. Historically, that is normally signed by a hundred percent is what, that's best practice is we only want to have a hundred percent of the landowners sign off, so that anybody down the road saying, I don't know why I'm in a PID, can come back and say, well, the person who owned this property when it was created asked for that. After that, the city council is able to take a resolution that would actually create the PID. So there's a resolution to accept the petition, the first action item. Second action item is a city resolution to create the PID. Then, in the meantime, once the PID's created, before we go to levy assessments, our team, and working with Jason's team and the other teams that represent the city, will be preparing what's called a service and assessment plan that really lays out exactly how much is going to be levied against the property based on the improvements that are needed for the development. Once that's been finalized, that comes back in front of council to be approved as a preliminary, calls a public hearing, and then there's a public hearing and a levy of assessments prior to any assessment's ever been there. So really, four to sit steps, four council items specifically before a levy's ever assessed. So again, we've progressed past that on some of the current PIDS, but as new developers come, really, there is multiple times that it comes back in from the council. So again, really, a process very well delineated, very well, a property owner can't come back and say, hey, I didn't, we didn't know that this happened. Council's in a position to take lots of action and give us and Jason's team lots of direction there. So again, we kind of have six-month process, really, this is all dependent on how the development's going, what's, what is needed, and when homeowners are expected in that area. We say six-month process because it's not normally a lot faster than that unless a development agreement comes in and has already been done. So just in case you ever have a developer say, how fast would it be to create a PID, we normally say that the six-month process is about what we would expect to go about as fast as possible there.
One thing that I would add to that too is, and we don't see this much anymore, we're used to, it was more common, where developers would come and just say, hey, let's go ahead and create the PID and then we'll work through the development agreement. And we always advise, don't do that, right? Because you're giving up some of your leverage if you do that. And so really, the first thing is having that development agreement in place, then it's moving on, as Jordan was talking about, and going through with the creation of the PID and ultimately, levying of assessments. So one of the nice things too is you see here, as far as who you have on your team, so again, I work as the financial advisor to the city, Jordan and his team work as the PID enters administrator. But really, you also have, the city attorney is involved, city engineer, bond counsel, he had a conflict tonight, so he could not be here. Ultimately, if bonds are contemplated, then you see an underwriter that would come in and would market and sell the bonds. And then the last thing is, we have some of the metrics that guide the PID and guide a bond issue are based on the appraiser or appraisal. And so you have a third-party appraiser that is hired by the city that has that appraisal. So those are all of us that are here and again, serving the city. So next slide. So let me talk just a little bit about the types of PIDS. So a PID can be set up and can be funded in different ways. One way is a pay-as-you-go PID. So developer approaches the city, asks for you to set up a PID and basically says, I'm willing to take that assessments or those assessments over a period of time, whether that's twenty, twenty-five, or thirty years. And so city, if you'll create this PID, if you'll levy it, again, I'll just take that as almost an annuity payment on a yearly basis for a defined period of time. What is much more common are the last two, though, where you see a developer come and request that you, the city, issue bonds. And remember, the reason they're asking you to issue bonds is because you create the PID, you control the PID, if there are bonds issued, you issue those bonds. Now again, whenever you issue bonds, you issue PID special assessment revenue bonds for that specific PID. So you don't issue GO bonds, you don't issue certificates of obligation, nothing, as Jordan kind of talked about at the very beginning, nothing that has your tax pledge on it, water and sewer revenues, sales tax revenues, nothing. It is solely those assessment revenues levied within that specific PID. So two different ways that those special assessment revenue bonds can be issued. The developer may go in, put in all of the public infrastructure and actually have some homeowners in place and then say, hey, will you now issue these bonds? And so those are what are known as reimbursement bonds, because again, all the public infrastructure's in place, and it's not uncommon that you have homeowners in place as well. The assessments put in on the front end, right? And then the bonds are sold typically eighteen to twenty-four months later. And that timeframe can vary a little bit, but normally eighteen to twenty-four months. What we see a lot of times is developer will say, you know what, I would actually like you to do is I'd like you to sell bonds upfront, or what we call bare-dirt bonds. And what that simply allows the developer to do is it allows them to get reimbursement quicker. Because remember, whenever we sell bonds, the proceeds of those bonds go to a third-party trustee. So the nice thing is you are not selling bonds and handing a check to a developer, it goes to a third-party trustee. And actually, if you'll go to the next slide, I think it kind of goes through a little bit there, what happens. So developer puts in the public infrastructure. Public infrastructure is inspected by your engineer, city signs off on it, assuming that it meets all of your requirements. And then at that point, the developer is submitting invoices, things of that nature to P three. They go through, they check those, and once all of those steps happen, that's when the developer can get reimbursed. So to summarize, they put infrastructure in the ground, convey it to you, and then that's the point at which they're getting reimbursed. So again, it is not simply that you hand them a check, it is all very detailed and is a step-by-step process. So this just kind of goes through some of the things, and Jordan, as a PID administrator, I'll let you kind of talk about that.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, to Jason's point earlier, the idea is that we are a collaborative group working on this, the city is not here to just kind of be in the PID game now, is that's why our team comes in to help as a administrator. And so exactly what Jason said, the developer is, once they're constructing improvements that are eligible for reimbursement, and, and I should clarify, improvements that are eligible for reimbursement are really only those that are owned and operated by the city or by a special third party that the city authorizes to do so. So this is really typically roads, sewer, water, things that the city is going to add into its own infrastructure. So the developer has fronted those costs, dedicated those improvements over, and then is able to get the dollars back for it, while allowing the city to grow its own infrastructure. So again, the way that typically works, developer has completed, has said, city, we are ready to dedicate these improvements over, would go through your engineering group to say, hey, these are up to the city's standards, go through planning group to say, these are up to the standards, and then they would submit invoices to our group. Our team would go through all of those invoices to ensure what is being paid is what the PID was instructed to pay for. So we spend lots of time, we, I should say, my draws team, spend lots of time going through invoices to confirm that exactly what is being paid is what the assessments were levied for. So experts in engineering maps to run through all of those to just confirm all of that. Additionally, not only is that the money going out, but on a year-over-year basis, the service and assessment plan has to be updated to reflect exactly how much assessment will be collected in the next year. As Jason said, assessments can be prepaid. It's a unique feature, they are not a tax, they can be prepaid at any time. And so our team, working with a financial advisor, working with the city team, made sure that prepayments are reflected, and so that homeowner never gets another bill. That is part of what, we will come back every single year to update the city on where the service and assessment plan is, where the assessments will be. We continue to account dollar-for-dollar how much is coming in and out of the trust estates, we'll file annual disclosure reports with the city team, really, all the obligations that are related to a city, related to a PID bond, our team is involved with. There are quite a few things that the city will hold the final pin and sign off on, and that's why we work very closely together with you all. So that's fine?
So let me go through, if there is PID debt that is issued, as I said, that is issued by the city as special assessment revenue bonds. Couple of things, this is non-recourse to the city in the fact that, again, it does not, you do not have your tax pledge behind it, sales tax, utility revenues, anything else like that. Issuance of the PID debt does not impact you on the city GO side. So if you were to decide at some point that you wanted to hold a bond election, or there were some kind of needs, if you wanted a street program and you were going to fund that with COs, for example, those would be two separate and independent debt obligations. So again, those special assessment revenue bonds do not affect your capacity. So as I said, you keep all of your ad valorem and sales tax. She was testing me there, if I had it memorized. And then that last bullet point on the left, it counts against a bank-qualified debt. What that simply means is basically you can issue ten million dollars or under, and typically, that will carry a small interest rate benefit. And so if you go over that ten million dollars, it's a slightly higher interest rate. Having said that, what we typically do, we'll write that into your development agreement to effectively have the developers offset any kind of cost to you, the city, if they are the cause of you going over that ten million dollar cap. So as you can see there, on the right-hand side, if there are any costs incurred as a result of creating the PID or anything like that, if you're paying any kind of fees, that can be reimbursed to you, or it can be paid through a professional services agreement that is set up on the front end. And then as I went through, that administration is typically contracted to a third party, which is what you have done with P three Works, and again, is paid by those PID assessment revenues that you collect. Next slide. So one of the things that we try and do is really get in on the front end and kind of look at all angles. So whether it's the legal side, whether it's the financial side, whether it's the day-to-day operation side of the PID. And so there's a number of benefits or potential benefits. Again, if you have land that's in the ETJ, you may be talking with the developer and he will, he or she will say, I'm willing to annex, but this is what I would like for you to do. And so that's probably one of the most common things that we see, and particularly with smaller cities that are growing cities, that have quite a bit of ETJ. The other thing is, you see, it does give you the opportunity to increase your tax base quicker, relatively speaking. Sometimes just incentivizing and providing that will have developers come online sooner rather than later. As Jordan went through the enhanced project in amenities, he did say this, I do want to underscore it, the PID, again, can only be used for public infrastructure. However, what we try to do is, as we're working with the developer on a development agreement, is say, okay, if we're giving you some of these things, or if we're going to reimburse some of these public costs, we'd like to see higher amenities, we'd like to see a hike and bike trail, we'd like to see not just a little small playground, but some kind of larger family center, things of that nature. So that's typically what we're doing. So that's typically what we're doing, is trying to have a nicer development than what we otherwise would get. And then, again, it can advance the different master plans, so whether that's your comprehensive plan, your thoroughfare plan, things of that nature. And then, too, there are times where you'll see, Jordan and I have a city up in the Denton area where they have a lot of ETJ, and they have to strategically go and get development. And so a lot of times, there's development behind development. And so what this allows you to do is it allows, or it is a potential mechanism, to be able to develop not only that land that is immediately adjacent to the city, but maybe land that's also on top of that. There are the challenges or the considerations, as you can see there, the public perception of you are providing and potentially issuing bonds to provide reimbursement for public infrastructure to developers. There is a cost to that, as we talked about, and that, again, is borne by those landowners within the Pid. But again, as much as we can, what we're doing is localizing that, so only those who benefit are paying. It's not your entire tax base. There is the headline risk. One of the things I wanted to also kind of go into a little bit more detail on is you, as the creator of the Pid and as the administrator and overseer of the Pid, have the, you have to basically go in and you would have, what's the word? Foreclosed, thank you. Foreclosed for non-payment of assessment. Okay? Now, one thing I want to be very clear on, that's not simply if someone is one day late with their assessment, you're not beginning foreclosure proceedings. It's much like a tax, where if it is over a period of time and they are not paying that, that's when you would have to administrate foreclosure proceedings. Again, just like if it was a tax situation or non-payment of taxes. Again, bonds, you are the issuer, and what we try to do is, we try to limit the exposure as much as we can. The nice thing is, to my knowledge, there are no Pid assessment revenue bonds for residential developments in Texas that have gone into default. That's not to say that it won't happen or it couldn't happen at some point, but we do everything that we can on the front end to prevent that. For instance, we have a debt service reserve fund that's put in place if we sell bonds, typically equal to one year of maximum annual debt service. There's also, statute allows the imposition of additional interest, so it's a little bit of a one-half of 1% where you collect that as well. It could use that in the event of a shortfall or non-payment by certain members or certain owners within that community. There is an administrative burden. It is, again, paid for out of the Pid, but you do have to approve a service and assessment plan every year. So there are certainly things like that. And as Jordan went through, while he and his team are doing a lot of the day-to-day operations, they're going to have times when they have items on the agenda that they'll need you to look at and approve. And then the last thing, as I went through, is the covenant to foreclose. So that's a big one, and always want to make sure that we are very transparent about that, that that would be what you would have to do, again, in the event of a long-term non-payment of assessments. So I know that we've thrown a lot of information at you in a pretty short period of time. What questions do you have that we can answer for you?
Mr. London.
So you mentioned something about the residential ones not going or not using a Pid that have failed, and we can point right over into Rowlett. Those were done with Pids. And so the city of Rowlett is on the hook for somewhere an area of 1-point-something billion dollars. So I, I'm not a fan of Pids, I'll just tell you that now. It's no surprise to anybody that's ever seen me down in Austin. I will argue Pids and muds all day. But I, I understand where you're coming from, and I do see the value in them, and I understand the need for a lot of places to have them. But a city our size, growing the way that we're growing, and I know that in, what, five to 10 years, we're going to be doubled practically? So, you know, we have to think smart, and we have to partner smart. So even though I may be opposed to them, I'm not a hard stop no altogether. But I just need to make sure the best thing that happens for this city and for the residents is that we're financially and fiscally responsible. And, you know, if this is going to help us and not create another layer of bureaucracy or burden, then, you know, I can be for it. But I, I just, I'm going to walk into these things with a lot of caution, just letting you all know. So, but that's really my statement on it, not so much a question. I understand where it comes from, so, thank you.
Understood. Mr. Towery.
Mr. Brewer.
A lot of the discussions about with developers coming in asking for Pids and the bonds and the money behind that, do we, has there been, have you all ever had an experience where you went into, where a city asks you to come into an established neighborhood and say they want to do some improvements in that neighborhood? Is that something that is a Pid available?
So if it's okay, we can kind of jump ahead and talk a little bit about that. So probably, I believe it was the February to March 2024 timeframe, so I talked, I believe the mayor was involved, and of course, the then-city manager. One of the things that was discussed was one of the neighborhoods here, and there were private streets, if I remember correctly, that had basically failed. Could we look at doing that? Couple of things, whenever we set up a Pid, the vast majority of those Pids are set up on bare land, right? And as Jordan talked about, because you have one owner. They're also set up before they're homesteaded. And whenever that happens, the security of that comes above private financing, and it comes above everything except for ad valorem taxes, right? So city, county, school taxes. If it's after the homestead, and Jordan, as a former lawyer, can kind of go into more detail after I say this, but that's not as strong of a security pledge. I say that within the context of, I think the short answer is, yes, you could set up a Pid on an existing neighborhood. I think the issuance of Pid bonds for an existing neighborhood would be problematic. I think at the very least, there would be a number of things that we would have to look into. Security, again, buyers, whether they would accept that, and again, that relates back to the security. And if they would accept that, would there be an interest rate premium? So it might be a situation where it might not be the most advantageous financing, i.e. the lowest cost to them. I will tell you, the city of Heath has done this. They set up a Pid on an existing neighborhood or development, but they issued debt on it, very small amount, I think it was about 710,000 to 720,000. But those were issued as certificates of obligation. The main difference there is the security pledge to the investors is the full faith and credit, i.e. the taxing power of the city. Said another way, if those people in the Pid didn't pay their assessments, the city's on the hook for it, right? And so that, I'm not saying that was wrong. I think that that was the most advantageous way to finance that. And again, given all the questions, whether it's legal, security, or otherwise, that was the best way to do it, in their opinion. And full disclosure, we were financial advisor, or we are a financial advisor, city of Heath, that's not me, but I did talk with my partners. They did talk about issuing special assessment revenue bonds, but again, decided that that was not the best way to do it.
And in that case, correct, the city levied assessments against the existing homeowners. Existing homeowners consented to that. Those assessments were collected annually and were used as the supporting revenue stream to pay those COs back with the city's tax pledge on top. Is that correct statement?
That's exactly right. And so your taxing power is, generally speaking, the lowest interest rate, or because of that, you're going to get the lowest interest rate possible. Another large city, city of Irving, actually did that, where they issued COs, and it was for Pid improvements. And in their case, they basically said, look, it's going to be roughly half of the interest cost if we do it as COs versus special assessment revenue bonds, and we are willing to accept that if the assessments aren't paid, we know that we have to pay it. So, so I think, again, going back, we would have to do a little bit more research if you wanted to go down the path, especially with the special assessment revenue bonds. But I think the short answer is, yes, that could be set up, and yes, that could be used in conjunction with an existing development.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean.
So if I understood correctly, regarding the homestead, it sounded like it was cleaner if it wasn't already homesteaded, but that's not a rule regarding Pids.
Yeah, no, that's correct, is when we're trying to sell the bonds, the highest security you can get is when the assessment comes before the homestead, because in that case, if somebody cannot make the payments, the property can be entirely foreclosed, but that is not a legal limitation. As assessments could be attached on a property that already has a homestead, it's just going to be subject to that homestead, and that drives the interest rate up when you try to sell just on those bonds.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Goodwin.
I'm good.
Mr. Powers.
Yeah, good evening, gentlemen. As you might imagine, there are thousands of people listening from home right now. So I'm going to ask some questions from the homeowner standpoint for anybody who may be here. We've asked the big questions that affect the city. I just have four quick questions for you. The homeowner can, can pay off this Pid debt anytime they wish to, not just when they purchase the house, correct?
That's right.
Okay? And then, once that's done, they are free from all charges related to the Pid, administrative and otherwise. So they're completely off the hook. If the Pid is paid off for a property, then that's transferable to the next owner as well. It's paid off forever.
That's correct.
Correct?
That's right.
Okay? And then the last one is if the homeowners are, are paying off the Pid, who owns the property? Who owns the assets?
The, the city, the assets that were financed by the assessment?
Yes.
Those would still be owned by the city. The improvements are still owned by the city.
100% all the time, every time.
Yeah, yeah, city or related, yeah, that's your point. City or related third party. If the city does not want to take it, control of an improvement, it could authorize a third party to, but yeah, it would be the city or added city direction.
So, so we need to understand that, I happen to be one that does pay a Pid. We need to understand that even though we are paying off those bonds as the homeowners, the city owns the property, the assets.
The, the assets that were financed, the water, sewer.
That's what I meant, when I said, I meant assets, yes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I will say, to homeowners especially, you know, the way this is typically set up when a assessment's levied prior to a homeowner coming in, is these are typically, best practice is we want to have the assessment in place well before the homeowners, so that it would show up on a mortgage, so that a homeowner, excuse me, that purchases property, first off, they have to have multiple notices that they are in a Pid. And then, secondly, when that assessment is in place prior to the homeowner coming in, that can be built into their PNI account. So it's typically not something that's showing up as a separate line item. So really, that's, that's a lot of homeowners that are in Pids until they actually have a separate piece, don't see that as a separate item.
One more quick question. What, what would happen if tomorrow, everybody decided to pay off their Pid early?
Yeah.
Or half the people decided to, what would become of the Pid?
Absolutely. So the, excuse me, the Pid would still exist as a legal boundary, but if all of the assessments were paid off, first, if it was bonded, those dollars that are received from the prepayments would be used to redeem those bonds, so that debt would be redeemed. If it's not bonded, those dollars could be released to the developer as the developer has completed improvements. But yeah, so the Pid stays in place, but no more assessments would be collected, and the city would not be needing to come up with additional money.
One thing I would just quickly add on to that, as Jordan talked about, whenever we issue bonds, it's actually explicitly written in the legal documents that that is something that can happen.
Yep.
And so we tell all of the investors is, there may be a situation where you think you have 30-year bonds, but if I, Jordan, you know, everyone that lives in there, to your point, half of the people, then we wipe out half that debt. So.
I don't have anything. I appreciate, I always can call Jason, and he answers quickly on this email, so I bug him quite frequently, and I'm sure I'll see him at TML, so I have nothing unless staff has anything.
Don't have anything much, just want to be clear on what the next steps are with regards to the Pid for the Sonoma Verde North and East.
Yeah, and that's, that's actually, so the next slide, so we wanted to stop there. That's kind of the big topic generally, but specifically, I think the next slide would go into the Sonoma Verde North. So we have developer here with us tonight specifically on this project. So this is the development agreement, like I said, the one that is progressing right now. That development agreement signed back in 2025, 314 acres. The annexation is expected as they sell Pid bonds, so this is exactly, we talked about how the Pid's supposed to be working, annexing property into the city limits in response to the Pid. 672 lots, you have the different 50s, 60s, and 65s there. We have a little breakdown off on the side in blue that may be a little hard to read. It looked better on the computer screen, now I'm seeing it. But have the different developers, Pulte, Del Webb there, building the different homes over the three phases. And so again, developers here, if there are any questions, but just wanted to give you, this is the one we're actively working on right now, that is progressing towards the assessment piece. And I think if you go to that slide, there's a, yep, that steps here. So city is, developers anticipating asking the city to early, levy assessments early next year on the first phase, it's about 337 lots. Again, that's $185 million in estimated home build-out values is the current estimate right now. So that would be annexed into the property, part of the city's tax rolls. That'd be both Del Webb and Pulte building, levying assessments, selling bonds Q1 of next year. So really, we're currently in the process of completing the engineering, working, Jeff, city planning team, working through all of those engineering pieces. Our team's working on the service and assessment plan. We'll be back to the city once that's done, to approve that, or consider that primary service and assessment plan, then we'll actually go out and sell bonds on that. So that would be an upfront bond in order to go through that process. And I think the next slide's the picture there. So this is the map, so you have Phase 1 there, you have this effort phase is identified. So again, wanted to go a little bit into this process as you start seeing us come more and more, this will be the one we're working on right now. And again, developer wanted to be here tonight if there was any questions for him. And then Fabrice, did you want to talk anymore on the, on the specific Pid?
I'll follow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just going to bring up Item 9.1, discuss and consider approval of the request to construct a new residence and designate the existing structure as a detached guest house for the subject property located at 1395 East FM 550 in the Single Family Residential Zoning District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant plans to construct a new primary residence and designate the existing structure as a detached guest house incidental to the main dwelling. The property complies with all zoning and land use regulations with plating approved by city council on September 23 of 2025. The proposal is consistent with the intent of the zoning district and the comp plan's emphasis on preserving low-density residential character. Staff recommendation is full approval of a detached dwelling guest house.
Fabrice, do you have anything on this one? Mr. London.
I'm good.
Mr. Brewer.
No, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Dean.
Good.
Mr. Goodwin.
I'm good.
And Mr. Powers.
Yeah, this one's pretty cut and dry, so I will call for a vote. Well, I apologize, we're way ahead of ourselves tonight, so apologize. Thanks, Mr. Dean. I'll entertain a motion on considering approval for Item 9.1.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we will hit the buttons on this one. All those in favor? And show that unanimous. Now we will go to 9.2, discuss and consider approval of a site plan for a convenience store with fuel cells. This site is located on the east side of the corner of State Highway 205 and FM 550, Rockwell CAD ID number 11384. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's open for discussion. Mr. Peyton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is requesting approval of a site plan for a convenience store with fuel cells. This application is administratively complete and is in conformity with the City of McLennan-Chisholm Code of Ordinance. Staff recommendation is approval, subject to engineering approval.
Mr. Fabrice Cabana, do you have anything on this one to add?
No comment, just that the applicant, Mr. Berry, is here this evening, just in case you have any questions for him.
Okay. I've invited Bev Stevens to, excuse me, be here tonight, since she was a part of this project, as she was our interim city manager. Ms. Stevens, do you have anything to add on this one for us? And I know we'll probably have some questions for everyone here, but just to get us going.
The only thing I would like to add to this is P and Z.
The only thing I would like to add to this is P and Z's action on this item was to deny it seven to zero. Just so you have that for your action to take.
Mr. London, do you have any questions for Peyton, Bev, or Fabrice on this? And the developer is here, Mr. Berry.
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Tower?
Yeah, I don't know if it's questions, but some comments on this. I just want to kind of go through my process and on this item. I had many conversations, many meetings. You know, I read all the information given to us backward and forward and over again. I have to, I have to be clear on, you know, I even attended the P and Z meeting. And, you know, there was some disagreements I have. The two major points of disagreement I have is there was some talk about an automotive service station and the, you know, what that was and, you know, could it possibly be interpreted as a gas station, et cetera? Which I, you know, to me, an automotive service station is just that. It's a service station for automobiles. You know, when I think of a service station, I think of like Shields. I think of, you know, if you'd be going Highland Park, you know, there's Shell Station there, does automotive repairs and stuff, you know, something like that. Another point is, you know, our ordinance, it doesn't require a, or the concept plan to mirror identically a site plan. Now whether that's something that, you know, we need to address as a city if we don't like that, you know, I think that, I think we need to maybe go and reword some things. But, you know, I can't hold a developer, Mr. Berry, at fault because it's something that we don't like. And what I, you know, in the wording of our zoning ordinance. But with that said, I don't want it to come across as they're trying to, you know, push some, something that we don't like through our city, you know? This is, when we work with developers, you know, we have to, when we have a developer that's willing to go above and beyond and listen to requests and work with us, I think that's important. You know, when I had these meetings, I talked to Mr. Castro from 7-Eleven. He was, you know, I was open and honest about, you know, concerns and things with this and they listened. And were absolutely willing to work with us. So, you know, I'm in construction. I go to many, many gas stations all over DFW. And I can, I can say, you know, without a doubt that what I'm seeing, this is one of the nicest 7-Elevens that I've seen. And, you know, when we talk about wanting commercial to come into our neighborhood, you know, what we want it to look like, I mean, these are the guys that you want to work with, guys that are willing to listen to what we're wanting in the looks and feels. And they're willing to do it, you know? So I just have to, you know, I have to say that, you know, like I said, if there's internal things that we need to change in our wording through the process, that's something that we can discuss. But from what I'm reading, from a legal standpoint, you know, this is a, it seems like it absolutely fits, so.
Thank you, Mr. Tower. Mr. Brewer, do you have anything on this one?
Just a, just a comment that when I looked at the plan development and the documents with it and what was allowed and wasn't allowed, the fact of the matter is a convenience store with gas pumps is allowed. And if the developer's checking the boxes and doing what is allowed in that plan development, then to me, you cannot vote to say no because they're following the rules that we gave. And like Mr. Tower, he said, if there's something that we need to tighten up for future, then definitely that's what we need to do. But I'm not going to penalize developer for the rules that we have in place now.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Mr. Dean?
Just to say that the P and Z vote is not something to be taken lightly and that I wrecked my brains the last week or so trying to figure out, you know, the best path forward. And did my own unofficial polling on what an auto service station was. And, but the definition in the ordinance is, is what really, is what we need to rule by. And I think, I think that's what, I think Mr. Berry was cognizant of when he developed it.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Goodwin?
Yeah. I think I want to go back and take a lesson for all of us here is, I went through this pit quite a few times, a month ago when it came up the first time. Now, this was four pages. Four pages. There was not much there. And one of those pages was a concept plan. And to me, a concept is something that is flexible. But what's not flexible is the contract. And general business clearly states convenience stores fuel. But what's even more important to me is there was a prohibited section. And what's left off of prohibited also speaks volumes. This was not prohibited by any means. So I think a lesson for us, plan developments need to be more thorough. But this, as far as the contract goes, this is in line with the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Mr. Powers, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what was said earlier that it's not an easy thing to dismiss a 7-0 vote by planning and zoning. They are, you know, volunteers for the city. They're, they have concerns for the city. They're here because their hearts in it and they're trying to do the right thing. And so it's not an easy thing to just dismiss that casually. And I'm not saying anybody here is. It's just I want that out there. It's not an easy thing to do. However, I, with what everybody else is saying here, I do believe that this absolutely checks all the boxes, that absolutely a convenience store with gas pumps is totally acceptable, you know, legal to do. But more than that, I'm actually pleased with, it's not just a matter of checking boxes, but how much further you're willing to go to try and, while meeting your own interests and exercising the rights to your own property, you're still willing to work with us and do enhancements to it that fit the image that we have for the city, the vision we have for the city going forward. So I wanted to point out those three things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Bev, if I can ask you a question here. Can you, for clarification, so people may not have seen the P and Z meeting and understand how that went and obviously are probably not privy in understanding of the many meetings that have taken place with this. So if you can, can you give me the definition of a concept plan versus what is allowed? So that way people can understand what we're measuring against.
A concept plan is typically attached to the plan development as a thought or an idea. It is not concrete. And it can be, per way our ordinance is written, it can be changed. Because the site plan, our ordinance does not say the site plan and the concept plan have to be 100% in agreement or even substantially in agreement. So this is where Mr. Tower spoke about our ordinance needing a little bit of work because it does not clearly define one against the other. So the concept plan that was with this PD in '22 is different from what Mr. Berry has proposed for one lot of the plan. There are still, I believe, three other lots to be considered at another point. So he has done nothing wrong in what he has presented. And the uses that he has put forward with the business, as stated by council, are in the general business use chart as an allowed use, which is the top line of the PD that was approved in '22. There are two prohibited uses that were discussed here tonight, and that was an auto repair garage and an auto service station. Neither of these, by our definition, in our ordinance, apply to a 7-Eleven convenience store or any convenience store with or without fuel cells.
You beat me. I was actually fixing to ask you to tell me that definition. I just started on my paper.
Okay. Would you like me to read those definitions?
I would because I'm going somewhere with this because I want people to understand. So if you could tell me what the definition of a garage and a service station is.
Okay. An auto repair garage, per our ordinance, is an enclosed facility designed for the repair and maintenance of automobiles, trucks, and vans with outside storage allowed, but no outside repair or maintenance conducted. An auto service station, defined by our ordinance, is an establishment for the retail sales of petroleum products, automobile accessories, auto tune-up, muffler installation incidental to the primary use, the installation or repair, oil change, or other lubricant services in which all services provided and all storage supplies, parts, equipment, and accessories are indoors with the exception of fuel dispensing operations. The definition of a convenience store with or without fuel sales in our ordinance is, a premises where gasoline and/or other petroleum products are sold as a principal use and in connection with the principal use, a convenience store offering for sale of prepackaged food products, household items, and other goods commonly associated with the same.
So in reading those definitions, would you say that a garage definition and a service station definition are different than what our actual ordinance says? Based off a convenience store with or without fuel cell? It's very different, correct?
Per what our ordinance says for the auto repair garage and the auto service station to not be allowed on this corner, neither of those items are what Mr. Berry is proposing for that corner. He is not proposing an auto service station that actually does tune-ups and brake jobs and oil changes. And he is not planning a, as Mr. Tower talked about, a Shields type operation, which is standard in Rockwall, it's been there 8,000 years, to have actual bays where a car pulls in and gets repaired. This is not what is being proposed for the corner.
Thank you. And the reason I'm asking a lot of these questions is because to what Mr. Dean and Mr. Powers stressed about is a 7-0 vote. And I need to make sure that whatever the vote is here tonight, people understand that this was not taken lightly by P and Z. We did spend numerous time with the city attorney. I'm sure Fabrice and Peyton are probably tired of talking to me about this. I'm actually tired of hearing myself talk about it. But last thing I wanted to ask real quick, and let me, I apologize to find my notes here. Can you explain to me from the conversations we've had with Mr. Hala on the difference that Mr. Tower brought up now, why they do not have to match, a site plan does not have to match the PD and the concept plan and why there's variances in that? Based off of the definition you gave earlier?
Per our ordinance, the way our ordinance is written, the ordinance does not state that the concept plan and the site plan have to either 100% match or substantially match. It does not mention it at all. So with what you have to act on tonight with the way the ordinance is written, there is no reason not to approve this.
Thank you. Is there any follow-up questions from anyone on the council? Mr. Powers? Mr. Goodwin?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dean? Gentlemen? Okay, with that, Angela, if you can set us up so we can go ahead and call for a vote? All those in favor? And show this unanimous. This will bring up Item 9.3, discuss results of the request for proposals, RFP for street repairs and culvert replacements on designed, I'm sorry, on designated roadway and consider direction to staff for next steps. Is this for you, Fabrice?
Yep. Mayor and council members, you might recall at the September 9, 2025 council meeting, you directed staff to issue a request for proposal for street repairs and culvert replacement on Briar, Glen Drive, Meadow Drive, and Glenacre Drive. This action was in response to a petition submitted to the city requesting that those roads be accepted as public roads. The city issued the RFP on October 1 with a submission deadline of October 15. These couple work of the project includes culvert replacements, asphalt paving services, as well as cement stabilization to ensure long-term durability of the road surfaces. The city received two bids for the project, one being from PMG Paving and Maintenance and the other one being from Anderson Asphalt and Concrete Pavement. The lowest responsive bid was submitted by Anderson Asphalt The purpose of this item is really just seeking direction from city council on what the next steps would be, which would include whether to bring this item at the next council meeting for RFP award.
Gentlemen, if you're okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Brewer to speak on this one, if that's okay with everybody, real quick. And then if y'all have any questions or comments. But I'll give the floor to Mr. Brewer first.
So we knew this was probably going to be expensive. I'm noticing on the bids that there's one, there's a little bit of a difference between the two in terms of the PSI on the concrete. I think PMG was a little higher. And they specified a warranty that I didn't see in the lower bid. I think in the ordinance, we can look at this as we get the, when we finally decide to look at and vote on the petition, we can look at that and make it conditional upon an agreement between the residents and the city because there's going to be a cost sharing involved. I think that it, I think, you know, we presume that they're going to say yes, they're going to want to do it, but they may not. But we'll have to give them the exact numbers for them and they'll go to their people. But I think for the next meeting that we go ahead and put the petition on there and we'll have representatives from the neighborhood and we'll hear back from them if they still want to pursue this. And then we can make a vote and decide from there. There's a lot of flexibility in the ordinance. I mean, in the ordinance, it says we can, we can make a decision on how we're going to finance it right then or we can do it no later than 60 days before the start of construction. So there's a little bit of time to work out possibly if we want to do a pit, if we want to do something other than a pit. But there's variation there. And we can make it all contingent upon mutual approval of the financing.
Thank you. Mr. London?
I'm good, sir.
Mr. Tower?
Yeah, I kind of agree. I think that we need to get all the numbers and present it exactly how we're going to want it and make sure this is something that it's actually attainable by the citizens and can be done. So, and then go from there as far as how we're going to finance.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dean, do you have anything on this?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Goodwin? Mr. Powers?
Yeah, I'd like to have the fire chief address, if I could, how the condition of that particular road and the culvert affects your ability to deliver fire and emergency services, including ambulance, police, et cetera, to that community.
So, excuse me, as of right now, actually, let me back up. I believe it was about three months ago, two or three months ago. three months ago, two or three months ago, we had a cardiac event on that stretch of roadway. It took over 10 minutes for the ambulance to get to the residence, and even with cardiac patient on the back of the ambulance, it took over 10 minutes to get out of that neighborhood. I wish this was something that had been addressed over the last 15 or 20 years. Unfortunately, it's to the point now that I think we collectively have to make an action on this, because at this point, it is truly a public safety issue. Having an additional 20 minutes to a cardiac event, to, I think it was a CPR in progress, actually, to CPR in progress, it's hard to even talk about the restrictions that were put on our service and Rockwall EMS's services because of a roadway. Like I said, I wish we had been addressing this 20 years ago. I wish we had a fire marshal's office. I wish we had co-compliance. I wish we had all of those, to where we could have been addressing this, small bites at a time, but unfortunately, we are where we are.
Is there, is there any direct danger that's posed to your apparatus, your personnel and your apparatus? Because we're obligated to respond to 911 calls there, obviously. And is there any danger to your apparatus being damaged on that road, especially going over the culvert, if the culvert were to collapse and/or injure your personnel? Do you have concerns in that regard?
Yes, sir. In fact, we've had a very similar situation on Edwards not too long ago. It wasn't a piece of our apparatus that was damaged. It was a mutual aid agency that their engine actually went out of service because of damages sustained from a poor roadway. We can continue on the way we are. The department is going to respond. If it takes us an extra 10 minutes to get back there, we're going to continue to do that. Rockwall EMS is going to continue to do that, and we'll just eat the maintenance costs that come out of it. Unless residents want to start giving up their yards when it's dry, so we can completely bypass the road and just run up their front yards. Like I said, we're going to keep responding. It's a matter of, do we want to replace a roadway, or do we want to start paying maintenance bills on pieces of apparatus?
There's also a concern of injuries. Do your personnel worry that culvert to collapse under the weight of the fire apparatus?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll reserve any further comment for now. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Powers. Really good questions, and actually ones I hadn't even, I hadn't even thought about. So I appreciate you asking those. Fabrice, on the two, I know you said one was 733, just so we're clear with the transparency, the other one was 742, correct? So, and I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Brewer to have this on the next agenda. I believe you and I have already spoke about it, yeah.
November 10th council meeting.
Yes, sir. You know, I have been talking with the community over there where this particular roadway is. I've talked with past councils and previous council and then current council, and it's just, it's, I have never understood how we take an oath on health, safety, and welfare, and then don't stand to the oath. And, you know, I see and hear and understand everyone's concerns, because I, to the chief's point, if things would have been better 20 years ago, then maybe we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. But I didn't realize, we just had a call there a few months ago, and that was 20 more minutes. I don't know, I had a conversation with Fabrice, I hope you're okay with me sharing it, but when I spoke with Fabrice on this, our current city manager, he echoed that these individuals who live in the community over there, they pay taxes, and they want to, they don't complain when something else gets fixed on another city road or that they may not use. And it is hundreds of different examples, but to me, it's just, it's going to boil down to me with health, safety, and welfare. I hadn't even thought about the culvert collapsing with our firemen. I mean, could happen. I believe one of the members in the community is a former fireman with Garland, not as good as McLemone Tittle, but it just, one of those things. And I just, I don't know, whatever we can do to move this forward, I think it's just time that, I can't remember who said it up here, but we take action. I'm going to go ahead and give everybody one more opportunity if they want to speak on this before we, because this is just directing with next steps. There's no vote here on this one. This is just a direction of next steps, which we've already given. But if you have any more comments before we go to announcements, and I'm doing that because Mr. Powers said he may reserve. So, Mr. London?
I mean, the only thing is, is, you know, I mean, the functional role of government is protection of life, liberty, and property. And, you know, we need to take that into consideration for all those also responding. So I agree with you wholeheartedly, 100%. This needed to be addressed years and decades ago. We are where we are just because of, you know, all the things that led up to this point. So I'm all for getting this resolved as quickly as possible.
Thanks, Mr. London. Mr. Towery, do you have anything final?
Yeah, I do want to ask if you could reach out to Anderson and find out what their true cost would be along with the warranty, because, and the reason I ask is because I specifically asked, with asphalt roads, it's super important that we get the follow-up, the one-year, two-year follow-up maintenance type of plan, and I wanted that. And I think I asked that that be. So I don't want one company to be faulted for, you know, for being complete. If we could just find out what theirs would be, so we can get a true number, because that's going to be important.
I will confirm, we did have a walkthrough with them. They did verbalize that he would come with a one-year warranty, but I'll make sure I get that in writing.
Sorry, not a warrant, not just the warranty, but the, to come out and actually do the crack repair, the one-year, the maintenance plan, maintenance plan, along with the warranty.
Okay. Mr. Brewer, anything final? Mr. Dean, anything final?
I would also ask that, I don't, I don't, I've never built a road in my life, so I'm not sure what PSI it needs to have. And so will our engineer have a comment on that? A city engineer on whether or not, what is, which is the better and why? Do you know what I'm saying? Not on this one? Okay. We're good.
Mr. Goodwin?
So this is going on the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Who is putting together, who's working on this?
Probably be Fabrice and Mayor Pro Tim.
So just for clarity purposes here, I'm hearing two items that need to be brought back at the, probably the next council meeting would be, one would be to bring back an item awarding the RFP, meaning approving the contract. And the second one would be bringing back an item, accepting the petition to convert these private roads into public roads. That would be pending, pending financing agreements with the residents.
Fabrice, there's also an annexation that we'll have to come back.
Yes, ma'am. That's.
Who's next? I forgot. Mr. Powers?
Yeah, based on everything I'm hearing here and the answers to the questions I asked the fire chief, it's clear to me that we have an emergency facing the city, a potential for emergency facing the city. Certainly, the delays in getting service back there is definitely a problem for the people that live back there, no doubt about it. But also the potential damage to our fire apparatus, injury to our firefighters. You know, God forbid you had a fire back there and the first piece of apparatus that goes over the culvert, it collapses and blocks the rest of the fire apparatus from getting back there. So to me, it's an obvious thing that this situation needs to be addressed. Repairing of that culvert and making that road at a minimum passable, gravel road, whatever, but it needs to be passable so that it's safe for apparatus to get back there, ambulances and so forth can get back there in a timely manner and not worry about that collapsing. This has to be addressed. It's no mystery to everybody here that one of my main concerns is using public funds to invest in a private road, repairs of private roads, stuff like that. I'm open-minded. I want to hear what the plan is for how we're going to pay for it. I know we have some creative ideas. And so I'm excited to hear what those ideas are. And if we can do that in a creative way where everybody benefits, then I'll be, like I said, excited to hear that.
Before I close this out, since we've already given direction, I do want to correct one thing. We actually would not be fixing a private road. Per the ordinance, if we adopt that road into the city, then we are now actually not fixing the private road anymore. So that would negate anyone's argument from the public, saying that we just used taxpayer money to fix a private road.
Yeah, not to argue with you, sir, but it would be public funds to take over a private, public funds are going to be used. I'm open-minded. I'm open-minded. I know we're all on the same page. We want to solve the problem. And so I'm anxious to hear what those solutions are.
Solid copy. All right. You got direction?
Just one question. Is city council open to exploring the route of going to PID, the PID route, establishing a PID for this particular project?
Yes.
Yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, you already have entered into an email or some conversations, getting information, and that could be, so one thing, if I'm understanding the ordinance, even if we, next council meeting and everything happens on the 10th, the annexation, and we go forward with the other things, we still have time to work the PID options out, because there's still more negotiations that take place in this process with the members who represent that street or those streets. They still have to go to their people, and then it's, it's still a process, isn't just, we just say thumbs up on the 10th or thumbs down or whatever the vote comes out to be, and it just, it starts the next day.
I would imagine that the, it would be the approval or accepting those roads would be pending on establishing some sort of financing agreement with the developed, with the property owners.
Absolutely. And that would also probably take care of the concerns that Mr. Powers has on his, which are valid concerns. All right. Well, I'm going to move us to announcements. Chief, I know y'all have something coming up on Halloween. Do you want to speak on that?
We will have the trick-or-treat drive-through at the fire station on Halloween night. What else? I think that's it. Yes. Adults are welcome to come out and pass out candy.
Bev, do you have anything? Mr. London?
I'm good. Thank you. I just appreciate everybody coming out and spending their time. I know a lot of Halloween parties are going on, and people are out there having fun. Just be safe, everybody.
Mr. Towery? Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of going out to the Helping Hands opening ceremony for their new building that they have out there with new services, health services, and it's very impressive. Saw Councilman London out there. And so, you know, it's one of those things where you really wish there wasn't a need for that, but there is a need. And what's even better is that we have people and resources out there to help. And so that was, that was very nice.
Very good. Thanks, Jerry, for doing that. And Dennis? Mr. Dean? Mr. Goodwin?
Just reminding everybody, November 12th, breakfast with the council, 7:30 a.m. to 9 a.m. at Rosa's near the 30. I'll have the fire chief as my guest this month. Come on out and ask any questions, and see what's going on with the city.
Mr. Powers?
Yeah, just, I think everybody can see that, just by the questions and comments you see coming from the dais here and from our city employees, that the issues that we're facing are not things that we take lightly, that we don't delve into, that we don't try to understand and try to make the best decisions we can. I think you can see the heart of everybody up here. And I just, I'm just extremely appreciative to be working with this group of people. Also, I'm more than happy to come over and hand out candy, but not all the candy is going to make it into the kids' buckets, guaranteed.
That is fact.
Don't touch my Milk Duds.
That is fact.
You can have the Milk Duds. It's evil candy.
Mr. Cabona, do you have anything, sir?
Just a reminder that the, and this may be more so for you, but for the Veterans Day celebration on November 11th at 6:30 p.m., am I correct, from 6:30 p.m. to 10 p.m. right here at the fire station, we're inviting the community to attend.
Yes, and they will be, we will be catering dinner that night. So please come out and just sit at the table, talk to some veterans, and just say thank you. The only announcement I have, and this one is, this one's a tough one. Tomorrow is Jerry Brewer's birthday. I said tough one. I wasn't sure if your hair dades were on or anything there.
He doesn't, he doesn't look 70, does he?
So, but, you know, we appreciate all you do, Mayor Pro Tim, behind the scenes, in front of the scenes, showing up, showing out, and sticking to the good words that you stand by. And you're an example to all of us. And I wish you a happy early birthday. And with that, we're going to probably sing you happy birthday, so if everyone could join in.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Jerry. Happy birthday to you.
You know, it's not, I can't embarrass Bev as much anymore, since she's not up here with me as much. So I had to do that one to Jerry. It is 7:51, and we are adjourned.
Reminder, because of the Veterans Day event, our next meeting is on Monday again, November 10.